Mr. French, would you lead the pledge? Okay, so, the first item on our agenda is the ACO project presentation.
Yes, good evening. Before we start with the presentation, I think I would like to take a moment to thank all the parents, staff, teachers, particularly the voices of Wyndham Volunteers that supported our budget. As you know, our budget was passed last night, first try, and this is a signal that there's trust in what we're doing and that people believe that the initiative that we have in the district will have tremendous outcomes to its achievement. So I think it's brilliant to really thank all the community members, the parents, the teachers, the staff, and particularly, as I said, the voices and volunteers at Wyndham that really put a tremendous effort. And you, Dr. Sewell, I want to thank you also for your time and for attending, and also members of my cabinet, Margaret, I know that you spend a lot of time supporting that. So, again, we are very grateful, happy.
It's hard to name everybody that...
Yes, it's hard to name everyone. But if we said our parents, teachers, staff, community member, board member, and Mrs. Lambert was there too. Mrs. Lambert actually is the one that put all those stickers, took those stickers around and the van, etc., etc., so we want to thank Mrs. Lambert also. Again, when you start calling people, you miss a couple of names, right? But everyone that participated, thank you. Our first agenda item is the presentation of our early college opportunity students, the ECO program. And a couple of weeks ago, these students had a project, and it was a, per se, competition project where every student in the program participated. And then we'll tell you more about it, Mr. Prose, the teacher of work learning experiences, work learning, right?
Workplace learning.
Workplace learning, we'll tell you more about it. But I think the most important thing about this project is the skills that were involved, and the talent and the knowledge in developing this project. They had to do research and did a pretty good job. They had to use their math skills and their business skill to this project. They had to use all their reading skills to this project, decision-making to this project, leadership skill to this project, team building skill, all of those skills that are needed today in any type of job. So, we call them the soft skills, and these students definitely have presentation skills to do this project. And so, we want the board to really see, this is the winning team, and we wanted the board to have an opportunity to briefly see what was involved in their presentation. So, I'm turning it over to Mr. Prose. And you can introduce and do...
Hi, everyone. I think I know everyone here. I'm Mr. Prose, and I teach the workplace learning class for ECO. We do lots of... What's this word? All right. The class I teach is called Workplace Learning. Basically, my job is to prepare them for the world of work. As you know, they're getting associate's degrees and two majors, either lien manufacturing or supply chain management. I have ninth and 10th grade students. They're at the early part of their program, and so, what my job is, is to prepare them for the world of work. The keys to success. We have a partnership with EMA, Eastern Events Manufacturing Alliance, and we met with them last summer, and they told us what skills they thought the students need to know to be prepared so they could succeed in the world of work. Soft skills. Soft skills are skills that you... They'll help you be successful in whatever job you go out and you prepare for. We have a partnership. They sent, EMA sends Mr. Rose to my class two days a week. He's an electrical engineer from Electric Boat, and he works with us and very closely with us on our projects and helps us prepare them for their careers in manufacturing. Last summer, I spent several weeks here with Ms. Bowling, working on the skills that the EMA wants our students to learn, and we created our own maps and priority standards. I teach four priority standards to the students. The first one focuses on self-assessment and leadership. The students were able to evaluate themselves as learners, professionals, and use this data to prepare themselves for professional growth. The second priority standard is teamwork communication. The students will have to learn to work together effectively in the world of work. As you know, working effectively together with lots of differences sometimes is quite difficult. Communication skills is another standard. They had to work together to solve this project. The third standard we talk about is accountability. I set deadlines for them. We give them projects, they have to be due by this week. They were given this project, they were given a timeline, and they had to meet those timelines to prepare for the presentation. We also work on professionalism, teaching them to act like young adults, and workplace ethics. The last standard, critical thinking and problem-solving. My whole plan was to give them a project, give them an essential question, and then just step back and watch them use these standards to put this presentation together. They were evaluated on these things: presence, language skills, organization, mastery of the subject, visual aids, and their overall presentation. These students were told they were presenting this in the auditorium. There was over 100 people there that night. They had to stand up and present their idea to the crowd and try... It was a competition. I have four classes, two sophomore classes and two freshman classes, and they had to present to investors. I don't want to tell you about the project because I'll steal from them, but it takes a lot to get in front of a crowd, you know? Public speaking is very hard. And these four that are here tonight were selected as the project leaders and the presenters to go in front. The whole class worked on the project, but these are the four that presented. I'll let them mention who subsides to you when they come up. But the ninth grade team won. My fourth period class, they rock and roll. I'll tell you, they broke into teams, they elected leaders, they broke into committees. It was amazing to watch them use all the skills that we worked on our year to solve this project. The fix-it-up investment opportunity, that's what it was called. I'm going to give you a little bit of background on how we got to it. Some of the students were walking to school. They walked by homes that were empty. And it was another lesson we do on entrepreneurs. I'll give Angel Ponte the idea. This was all his idea. He's like, "I don't understand, mister. These houses are empty. Why doesn't somebody buy them? Why doesn't somebody move into them?" I watched that show where you could fix them up and flip them and make some money. "Why doesn't somebody... Why are these houses empty?" I said, "That's a good question." So, I'm going to let the kids come up and tell you. And the question I gave them was, "Hey, can you invest in a property in Willimantic? Can you fix it up? Can you make a profit?" And that's it. I gave them that question, and they got out of their way. And so, they had to work together to solve that problem. Introduce V.
Hi, my name is Viabene Vargas-Negron, and I will be talking to you about the essential question and the banker slides. So, the question Mr. Prose gave us in class is, "Can you invest in a property in this town and make a profit?" The house restoration project. Our goal is to improve the community with new and interesting ideas and values. We are looking for investors who will fix up a... Who will fix up a house and invest in the community. Each class has presented a house to... As an investment opportunity, and we were selected as the best proposal. Oh, wait. Project overview. We had to complete a final proposal to present to a committee of investors, which were the judges, and we had to compete for their approval. The house property is in Willimantic, and it... The house had to be for sale and in distress. And our budget to fix up the house is $50,000. These are our guest speakers. These lovely people. They helped us out with finding the research and having the information that we needed. And they're from the bank, the insurance company, Remax, Wyndham Town Hall. So, we used basically all the resources we can find. This is our banker, Mr. Dimitri Dino Ricardon. He's the manager of Savings Institute Bank and Trust. He taught us about interest rates in Willimantic. He also talked to us about fixed rate mortgage. He told us that a fixed rate mortgage is ideal for predictable payment and investment because you can... Well, your principal and interest rates never change. He also told us the minimum requirements to get a loan. You have to meet the minimum age, in most states it's 18. Have an open active checking account, a valid phone number, and you have to be able to show proof of income.
I'm Noah Butterick, and I'm going to be introducing the Wyndham Town Hall slides. Everybody that we had talked to had let us hear. It was a big thanks to all of them. It teaches you all about if the house has a lien, any updates, taxes paid on it, mill rates, the square footage and details of the house, and the owner of the house.
Hi, my name is Andrea Villa, and I'm going to be talking to you guys about insurance. When we were researching about our house, we knew that we needed insurance, so I contacted my sister, and she taught us all about homeowner's insurance. We specifically came in to talk to us about dwelling five policy, which is a policy where the owner owns a house but doesn't live in it. Building risk policy, which is an add-on building that you build or you repair. Renters' policy, which covers itself and liability and just helps the renters' belongings be covered. Personal property and personal liability helps... So, if your personal belongings got destroyed, they would be covered, and if anyone got hurt around the house, that would also be covered, and quotes in the house. They came in to talk to us about quote, which is an estimation of insurance cost on the house. We learned that renting to... We learned that rental properties were higher risk, and they suggested that we should look at a lot of insurance quotes so we can find the best value. Insurance projections. The owner has to have a dwelling five policy because the renter needs to live in the house, and we don't live in it. And it covers itself in liability. The renters, we would like them to get renters' policy, which is a policy where it covers any loss in liability. It only costs $300 for the renters to get, and it would be more effective on us, so if anything did happen, we don't have to pay as much.
Hi, everyone. I'm DeShaw Lee, and I'm going to be presenting the Realtor slides to you. So, our Realtor was Melinda Wallen-Shevix, and she was a very useful asset during this presentation. I mean, she was one of our biggest helpers during this entire process. So, these are some of the houses she showed us around town. These are some of the options that she showed us. So, we have three houses here, but she gave us a lot more. So, I'm going to talk to you about foreclosures because mainly the houses we were looking at were foreclosures here in town. And so, the pros could be the seller's more likely to do repairs, and it's less expensive. Some of the cons are you may face steep competition, and there might be costly repairs like roofing, plumbing, and electrical. So, she also taught us what a mill rate was, and I'm sure you all know what that is because our budget just passed recently. So, the mill rate in Willimantic is 40%, and Wyndham's mill rate is 39%, but that varies. She also taught us about liens, which are a payment placed on the house when, like, you're in debt. So, that needs to be paid off before you can buy the house, of course. And she also taught us that the price is always negotiable. These are... This is some of the insights she gave us. She taught us about fixed costs with our... Which are a monthly payment. And she shared with us that you need to have good credit to get a loan. And also, she stressed the importance of an inspection on the house. She also learned us about costly repairs. Like I said, roofing, plumbing, electrical, stuff that'll cost you a lot of money. And like I said, the price is always negotiable, and she educated us on the pros and cons of foreclosures and the risks that come along with them. So, these are some of the viewings. So, like I said, she even came into our class a few... A couple of days and helped us and taught us, like, what the words mean, like MLS numbers, mill rates, liens. And she was really amazing through this whole process. So, these are the landlords.
Hi, I'm Andrea. Again, I'm going to talk to you about the fabulous landlords that came in to talk to us. Their responsibilities was to make sure that the house was safe, and it was nice and clean, and to educate our renters about that, about it. One of the landlords that came in to talk to us was Neil Sherman. He works here at Wyndham High, and he is very wealthy. His method was to calculate your expenses so you know how much you spend each month, determine the income so you know how much you're getting paid each month, set savings with... So, if you know if you pay off, if you owe anyone, record spending so you know what you purchased, and be realistic about it. The benefit... Mrs. Sherman liked to rent to college students because he knew that the parents will pay off in the year in advance. That it's a really great market outlook because we have two big colleges around here, and we know that a lot of students are looking for houses to live in, and we know that they're not that fussy about what the house looks like. The other landlord that had came in to talk to us was Felix Ayala. He also works here at Wyndham High School. His point was where that renting makes a lot of money, and you could always fix up the house yourself. And he owns 18 apartments and paid off four buildings to this day. He taught us that we can do it ourselves, which means that we could fix up the house and not call and ask someone to do it for us, when we can do it ourselves because it's less time, and it's good to know the skills to do that.
All right, so our team was called Echo Connection, and our slogan was "The freshman with the So, this is our proposal. The property we chose here in town was 154 Wyndham Road, and we felt strongly that this was the right investment because you would make us a substantial profit off the house, and if you put all your savings into paying off this house, you would get your money back within five to six years. So, about our house, as you can see, these are some of the pictures of the back and the interior. And this is the front of the house. It has a really nice wraparound porch, so college kids would like to sit outside and hang.
We chose 154 Wyndham Road. It's a single-family house. It's built in 1929. Is five bedrooms, two bathrooms. The floor size is quite big, around 1,800 feet. That's pretty nice. The home price that they're asking for is $64,800.
All right, so these are the total assessed values, but the important thing on the slide was is the total assessed partial value, meaning the total value of the house. And that was $83,250. But we were getting it at $64,000. So, we had about $18,000 worth of equity. That's really good.
Why this house is a good investment for you and the community. Normally, college students, they're in the on-campus housing for $10,000 a year. Their parents have to pay a lot of money. But with us, they'll be saving $5,000, and we'll be making a lot of money a year. $450 a month for each bedroom, and we're going to have an individual lease for the renter, and it's going to be co-signed by the parents.
So, the lease and educating the renter. We know that to some people, funding to college students can be scary. You feel that they'll wreck your house. But we're going to have a strict lease, so, like, we'll ensure that the house is safe. So, we're going to talk about things like maintenance responsibilities, the amount of the security deposit, co-signers in large security deposits, and also rules about roommates and subletting.
Our costs, the tax history in 2015 were about $3,828. In 2017, it's going to be around $4,000.
This was the mortgage on the house, and for a 3.294% fixed interest rate, the mortgage on this house is only $365 a month, and that's with a 15-year fixed interest rate. So, keep in mind, you're paying off the house in, like, half the time it usually takes.
The house repairs, all it needs is some minor, like, aesthetic appearances. They don't even have to be that good. You're renting to college kids. Who cares? All you got to do is put less than $5,000 into the house. Everything will look good, and it's pretty nice.
So, this was the insurance quote we got from Andover Company, and it was $1,075. And the entire amount of coverage on this house is $293,000.
The income that you're going to be making. We've decided to charge $450 per bedroom to each renter so they can commute to Eastern. $450 times five is $2,250 of gross profit per month. Based off this information, you're going to get $22,500 a year of gross profit for renting to college kids for 10 months.
So, this is our net profit for the expenses per month. We did the insurance plus the taxes plus the mortgage, and that added up to about $774. So, your total profit per month is one, about $1,500. And your total profit per year is $13,212.
The sum that we're going to have here, the total investment is around $22,000. You're going to make that back in less than two years. The profit is 13... Yearly profit is $13,212. Monthly profit is $1,476. The return on investment, it takes exactly one year, seven months, and 20 days. If you only use your profits, it takes five to six years to pay off the entire house and mortgage. Thank you very much for watching our presentation. Thank you, guys. Once again, such amazingly brave young kids to get up here and do this. I want to thank you guys for asking us to come and letting us show off a little bit.
They know about mill rates.
Well, they do know about mill rates.
Thank you, guys. Great job. Great job to all of you. Yeah, we can move on. The second part of the presentation is, as you know, a couple of months ago, as part of the Alliance District, we had the coherence audit, and Mr. Andrew... Andrew Richard... Andrew Latman was here. And today, we have Mr. Robert Hendry and Mr. Richard Lemon from the Center for Connecticut for School Change, Lead, Connecticut, that are here to give you the findings of the capacity audit. Let me say that the purpose of this audit was to look at coherence in the district, and coherence mean looking at the structures and looking at the system, the procedures that we have in place to set the foundation for teaching and learning. They can tell you about the... In more detail, what took place, the process, and the amount of people that they interviewed, surveyed, etc., etc. So, I'll let them take over. So, Mr. Andrew Latman and Mr. Robert Hendry. Richard Lemon, I'm sorry. Mr. Richard Lemon.
Good evening, everyone. We'd like to thank you for allowing us to come and present to you. My name is Robert Henry, former superintendent, and this is my colleague. Can I change your name? Richard... Richard Simmons. No, Richard Lemon. Okay. We're both coming from the Connecticut Center for School Change, and what we're here to do is actually present to you the results of a study that we conducted through Lead, Connecticut, in terms of capacity and coherence, right here in your district. So, there's a review process that we have done. Lead, Connecticut is any and every entity that has to do something with education in Connecticut. And so, you look at the Center for School Change, you look at CAPS, which is the superintendent's organization, you look at CAE, which is the organization that has to do with school boards, you look at UConn, which is preparing your leaders, and so, that is the body that is known as Lead, Connecticut. Now, what we were able to come and do here, we have been doing with a number of districts over the last three years. We've been working with districts to have them assess where we are in terms of their quest to have improved outcomes for students as well as closing the achievement gap. Now, it's clear to all of us, and the research does show, that in fact, school boards and superintendents have a big role to play in terms of meeting those particular goals around achievement. No question that based on the roles that you play, based on the structures that you put in place, based on the systems that you put in place, based on the policies that you actually work and passed and move your district, those are the kinds of things that obviously ensure that principals, folks in the classroom, are able to move the district's agenda. So, what we would like to share with you is the fact that... And I'm going to ask you to assist me in a second, but before we move forward, it's important for us to share with you that we want to commend your superintendent for actually taking the leap and taking this on. It takes courage to be able to allow folks to come into your district and open all of the doors, no holds barred, in terms of what we need to look at in order to give the proper report. You shouldn't worry, but this study is actually sponsored, underwritten by the State Department of Education, so it cost the district no money, so to speak. But the information that you are able to obtain is going to be helpful to you as you continue to move forward in that quest. So, my friend, this first slide is simply intended to give you a view of the kinds of things that we are looking for. If you look at the middle of the circle on the left-hand side, you see the instructional core. Everything that we do, and all of our roles in education, have to do with what happens in the classroom. So, you're looking at the student, the teacher, and the content, what's taking place in that classroom. Everything else supports and needs to support what's taking place there. On the right hand, the smaller circle, really talks about the kinds of systems that successful districts have in place. And so, it has to do with the human capital, it has to do with instructional processes. There's seven systems, and those are the kinds of things that we came in to take a look and determine where you are in those parameters. A number of buckets that we, when we gather all of that information, that we try to ensure fits someplace. So, the picture that you get is... so the picture that you get is, is clearer for you. So, we talk about, the core idea is being, place your bets. And what that means is, so what is the district doing um, to further, again, the ability to move the district forward as it relates to what you're trying to achieve? Outcomes of students improved, closing the gap, uh, your theory of action, the kinds of things that you're saying, we're placing our bets here 'cause this is gonna help get to the finish point that we want. Then, you come to, how do we do things around here? And that really is the culture of the district. Is everybody buying in in the concept? Is everybody on board? And so, based on that, this is ensuring that you're not taking a look at the folks that are driving that part of it for you. Connecting the dots is taking a look to make sure that the things that you are putting in place are actually aligned to get you to the finish line that you are actually looking for. And building leadership capacity, uh, that has to do with the human capital, making sure folks have the skills, the knowledge, the ability to move the agenda that you are moving or trying to address to achieve the goals that you're looking for. And then, the last, again, is the systemic improvements in those systems that are gonna help you drive the, the agenda. So, four of us came into the district to conduct the study. And these are four folks, and if you, now, we looked at many, many kinds of data that was provided. Obviously, the first one was some binders that we were all very impressed with that actually captured the work that you have been doing in the respective areas that you have indicated you wanna move forward. Then, we interviewed the superintendent, we interviewed the cabinet, um, interviewed principals. In addition to that, we did focus groups. And that is anywhere from 10 to 15 folks across the district, group of teachers or paraprofessionals, whatever the groups were, so that we can get a sense from them, um, in terms of their feeling where the district is going. We did surveys. We actually observed the superintendent conducting her cabinet meeting. Um, we obviously came to a board meeting as well. And so, all of these are areas that we utilize to then begin to create the report that you're gonna hear about tonight. Okay, my friend?
What's your name?
I thought it was being a white thing.
Good evening. Um, you put us at a disadvantage. We had to follow those amazing students. So, congratulations for that teacher.
We have amazing students.
Amazing students. Uh, we've organized findings for the review around those five big ideas that Robert Henry just described to you. What I'll say is that we use those multiple sources of data to try to make sure that any claim we make, uh, or made, is triangulated across multiple data sets. If a single teacher were to make a claim, we're not writing that up. If, if we hear from 20 teachers, and it shows up in artifacts, and it showed up in focus groups, and we saw it in meetings, then all of a sudden, it's a trend or a pattern. So, what we're describing to you, organized in these categories, are broad trends and patterns. There are a couple of places, and you'll see them marked, where we might have a question, where it's, it's less of a claim, and it's not a suggestion, but it's a wondering we have. Uh, and there's another place that we have a conjecture. Almost everything else, we, are, are patterns and trends we observe, they come from multiple data sets. So, back to this big idea of place your bets that, uh, Robert Henry described. Again, uh, districts with great capacity to improve over time are folks working on small number of priorities. Any district that has 15 priorities has no priorities. So, districts that really start to make gains have a small number, and everyone in the organization knows what those priorities are. So, one of the things that we do, which is rather pedestrian, is we just walk around and ask people, what are you working on? And if we hear the same answers over and over again, that's a good sign. If we hear a thousand and two answers, that's not a good sign. Uh, we, in, in doing research for this, basically, we found that the most effective districts across Connecticut, but also across America, are places that have very, uh, a very, very clear sense of what they're about. They have a small number of priorities, they're laser-like in their focus, and they drive it deep into the system and sustain it over time. And that's basically what that summary provides for you. So, here's some of the findings from Wyndham. We were struck by the fact that people were pretty consistent. When we asked people to describe what Wyndham's working on, people know what Wyndham's working on. There's not a lot of noise in the system. Teachers, administrators, central office are really clear what the big priorities are. Um, there's agreement that there's a relatively small number, but I've got a caveat to that because you guys are ambitious. So, you have small number, but they're really complex priorities. So, they're not, they're not simple technical issues you're working on. Uh, the improvement part, excuse me, I've been, been, this is probably my fifth presentation, and it's only Wednesday nights, so I'm losing my voice at this point during the week. Uh, the improvement priorities seem to be pretty well-known throughout the system. We found this out by asking focus groups, by asking in interviews, and then even in the survey. And here's an example. Uh, on a seven-point Likert scale, over half of the people responding, teachers, administrators, central office, said that they agree, or strongly agree to the statement, "I understand the improvement priorities." That doesn't even include the category of people who say somewhat agree, and the category of people in the middle. It's a pretty strong number, who feel like they, they really understand what the district's working on. And that, that you can, you can understand why that is important. If people don't understand what they're working on, it's hard for them to make choices on a day-to-day basis that are in alignment with the district's priorities. And it ends up creating organizational chaos, and it ends up not having coherent improvement. So, as I was saying, small number of priorities, but these are big ambitious priorities. You have, uh, a district that's trying to do big things for kids. So, these are not simple, um, some, some important data points that, that we'd wanna point out is that even though 52% said they agreed, a smaller number of people said that we only have a few because the farther you go into the organization, the more people feel as if they're being asked. And it's because they also can't see the big picture, sometimes, of everything that's being asked upon them. About two thirds, and this is a really important number, is that you have people who understand what the work is. You have people who realize it's big, and still, two-thirds of your staff feel that this work is going to actually lead to improvements for kids. That's a pretty high efficacy score. Because often in districts, especially in urban districts, there's a relatively, there's relative low efficacy. Where people say, "I know what we're working on, but I don't really think it's gonna pay off for kids." You have, you have an educated workforce that really believes what you're working on is gonna pay off for kids. And that, that's really important. So, and some more, uh, headlines from place your bets. It's clear that the kind of trappings of what your organization are about are readily available, and they're used, are used in meetings. So, you have a, a written theory of action. You have mission statements, you have vision statements. But these aren't just written and put into a binder and ever seen before. They show up in meetings, they're on the back of your agendas, they're at the top of agendas. People reference them in meetings. So, they're living documents. And we saw evidence of that as we watched meetings, as we talked to people. People could cite it, people could pull out these sheets. They could, so, well, there it is posted next to my desk. So, it was clear that folks know that these artifacts for creating coherence exist, and they're in fact, being used to create coherence actively. Strong sense that, within the priorities, I've got a flag, I've got a friend here hanging out. I hope this is on video camera, too. I'm dancing up here to avoid a fly. So, um, there, there were some suggestions that, that even though there were a small number of priorities, there's some variation in the quality of implementation of those priorities. Some priorities really well-thought-out, really meticulous implementation and follow-through. And some were a lot of energy at the beginning, but maybe hadn't thought through the details, and then maybe it didn't go as far. So, there was, there were suggestions coming from teachers and administrators that this is something the system could work on within its, um, within its priorities. So, let's flip to culture. Again, this notion of powerful districts are districts where, where they really know who they are. They know what they stand for as an organization. It shows up in the ethos, the mores, the norms of how people interact in the district. We talk about this as how do we do things here? Um, and we know that districts with strong, powerful culture of collaboration, of sharing, of working hard, of grit, are districts that, in, on average, tend to produce results for kids. And districts where people don't have a shared culture, or where the culture is kind of antithetical to the kind of improvements you're trying to do. For example, teachers who don't ever wanna share their practice, but the improvement strategies are all about opening up doors is a mismatch. Uh, and we know that the places that have these kind of cultures take off. So, some of the headlines from Wyndham. Really strong sense of urgency widely shared across the district. And again, this is a really important asset. You've got a lot of strong things emerged for the district from the review, and this is one of the biggest. Almost 90% of your folks agree, we're working hard on the work here, and we have a shared sense of urgency. And sometimes, when we'll talk to people in districts, say, "Well, I'm urgent, but the people I work with aren't really urgent." Or, "They are urgent, but I know we really can't do this, so I'm not really feeling urgent." This is a district where people really feel, "We're serious, we're working hard, we're trying to do really important things for kids." And I think that's a, a powerful asset to keep banking on and utilizing really well. Uh, you have pockets of really strong culture. So, we, we spend some time in some schools, we spend some time talking to folks in departments. Uh, and we were struck in a few places where everyone was on the same page. They were clear where they were going. There was a strong sense of efficacy when you asked, "What are you working on?" They could describe to us in detail. Here's how we're taking district-level strategies. Here's what we're doing on a day-to-day basis. Here's how we're adjusting. And we're gonna make sure every kid makes it no matter what. It was, it was, it kind of, it blew us away. It sent us home on end of the day on a high, kind of, uh, being around some of these people. These are folks who've had a lot of pride in their work. They were able to describe how the district work connected to their work on a day-to-day basis in powerful terms. And there was high trust, especially in these schools we're talking about, between the administrator and the teachers. And, the caveat to this, is this wasn't universal. You had variation across the district in this kind of efficacy and culture. And we did see pockets of weaker culture. So, these were places where you said, "Well, walk us through how the district culture, how the district improvement priorities connect to what you're doing." You would hear language about us then, "Well, those people at Central Office versus us." Or, you would hear about, "Well, you gotta understand, our kids have changed." And, so, there's a lot of deflection of responsibility and efficacy in some of those pockets, and even a little bit of mistrust. So, um, again, this wasn't universal. You have a lot of asset on the other side, but this is something you wanna pay attention to because if you have lots of pockets of this kind of culture, the research would suggest you're not, you, it's hard to move the whole system with coherence. Um, some issues of trust, not, again, not universal, but some issues of trust that came out in interviews and focus groups, and in some of the surveys. It's clear that that trust, though, has historical roots. So, when people would talk about trust, they would often say, "And what you've gotta understand is where we've come in the last decade. You've gotta understand what the state did to us. You've gotta understand the change of regimes." Right, this was some of the language associated. What was, what seemed to be emerging to us is, is really a stronger developing sense of trust. And some people, quite honestly, kind of holding out to see, will it continue? Um, or will, will this flip in a year or two? You know, will there be a change of leadership at the top, and we can just kind of wait this thing out? But I think you're starting to see some real positive signs on the culture that, um, could have really powerful legs and could fuel some of the improvement work you're wanting to do. So, we also, uh, we're kind, really impressed by the development of the team that exists in Central Office. You have a superintendent who's really clear how Central Office wants to run. You have certain Central Office cabinet members who are clear how to work together and what effective teams, um, do with each other. And we think a lot of this has to do with a lot of face-to-face time that the superintendent, uh, is spending one-on-one, but also with the teams. There's a strong sense of how do we do meetings here? How do we use data to support our claims? How do we make sure that our department work is aligned to the district improvement priority work? And, um, notice that it has this caveat conjecture here in the second bullet. We found ourselves wondering that if that face-to-face time is such a powerful fuel of trust, is that connected with some teachers and administrators who are kind of wondering whether this work is gonna sustain? Because, quite honestly, they can't have as much face-to-face time with the superintendent. It's a basic organizational problem in a district of this scale. How do you get top-level leadership to connect with teachers in classrooms? It's, it's impossible to do the math. But it's something that we think that the district ought to think about is how do you, 'cause right, at the end of the day, relationships get built in face-to-face, shoulder-to-shoulder doing the work. They don't, trust doesn't really get built through memos and by telling people to trust you. So, how do we keep building that trust and keep it going and, and channeling out through the district? Third big bucket, connect the dots. This is the degree to which districts work at connecting the dots because the natural tendencies of large districts is chaot, is a little bit of chaos, a little bit of atomization, a lot of individuals doing freelance work because they're, everybody's busy and the work doesn't get tied together. We ask ourselves, how well does the work fit? How well does this system connect to this system? How well does the professional learning system connect with how you're hiring people? And how does that connect with your improvement priorities? So, we would be asking those questions. And we know from the research that, uh, districts that do this kind of work, the people that work in them have a greater sense of what they're working on. They have a greater understanding of how the improvement priority, thank you so much. The improvement priorities link to the needs of students in classrooms. And overall, they have a greater chance of improving. We actually have research, especially at the school level, of, um, organizations with high degrees of this alignment are more likely over time to produce changes for all, and positive changes for all students and reducing achievement gaps among different student groups. So, what were some of the findings of Wyndham? Clear evidence of work to unite. So, you have a district plan, you have departmental plans, you have school plans, and they're kind of, it's a nested system. So, you've got a lot of work to make that work. And those plans pull together some of those big pieces of work that set direction. Vision statements, mission statements, theory of action. So, you have an infrastructure that includes systems, structures, and routines to help connect the dots for people. And it seems to be having effect. The fact that so many people in the organization could tell us what you're working on is a strong sense of the kind of alignment work in connecting the dots. We can tell you, we're not gonna name other districts, but we can tell you, we've recently been in other districts. And you go around asking, "Well, what are you working on?" And we might get in one day 15 different answers that are not at all related. It's not just an issue of the using a different word. People just fundamentally don't understand what the district's working on. People just fundamentally don't understand what the district's working on. And that was not the case here, and a lot of that has to do with this kind of work. Another piece, and this is important, you can't have district-level, as much as we, most of us push back naturally against accountability, you can't have coherent improvement without some kind of positive accountability in the system. Your principals definitely feel accountable. And they, when we would ask, tell us about accountability, that we know, we know what we've got to do, we know we're being held accountable, we know we're being scrutinized in positive ways, we know that our work's being monitored, we know that the folks at Central Office are going to ask us to defend any claims we make using data and evidence. So that's, that's, again, a stronghold. This is not a place where, if you're an administrator, you feel like you can, you tell people what you're doing and then hide the rest of the time. This is a place of positive accountability. It's also the case, at the same time, that you have, you have some relationship building that has to happen between the school and Central Office level, a little bit of trust to work out, and you have some administrators who feel as if Central Office doesn't perfectly understand the unique needs of their school. Now, that could be that they just don't understand the big picture of Central Office, or that could be the fact that maybe they're interacting with some people in Central Office who don't fully get the specific needs of the school. But we just wanted to raise that as an issue for the district to pay attention to. Another issue that we saw as an important, and we've named this for the superintendent and for the cabinet, is you have made an important investment in people whose job it is to help teachers get better at their craft, coaches and instructional specialists. And in most districts where this happens, there's a natural tension that emerges between who's now really the instructional leader of the building? Am I, am I supposed to be the chief instructional leader of my building as the principal? And why are these people coming in to work with teachers who don't report to me, they in fact report to Central Office? And I can tell you in four different similar reviews this year, this is an issue that's emerged in three of the districts. So it's not new to Wyndham. But I think this is an issue of potential misalignment that you'll want to pay attention in. I'll point out later that your district has already started to take steps to line that up forcibly. They're, you're working on kind of anchor documents to clarify job descriptions and routines to help people stay on the same page. So that was a positive sign, and a much more positive sign than we saw in this other couple of districts who were having the same issue. We also know that districts that take off in terms of performance, they're investing heavily in leadership, that you can't do this work without powerful leaders at the building level, but also Central Office. There's an off-site research report that's about a decade old, but the research still is true. We've yet to find a turnaround school in America that didn't have a really talented principal at the helm. Now, that doesn't mean that a principal alone without effective teachers can do the work, but we know you can't organize teachers alone without really effective principals, and we know that you can't have a system of schools without effective leadership at the superintendency and among cabinet. So having tiered leadership throughout the system's a critical part of having coherence and high capacity, and again, that quote just summarizes that finding. Here's what we found in Wyndham. Clearly, this is a place where the principals matter a whole lot. You have very ambitious district-level initiatives, and they require translation at the building level. They require taking the, the direction and making it fit where that culture of the school is, make it fit where the faculty is at that time, and help it connect to the particular needs of the students. And it requires really skillful leadership. So, and this is not surprising. Number one factor in America that affects student achievement within the control of the school is the teacher. Number two is the principal. So it's not surprising that this would be really important. It's also, just a footnote on that, we know that superintendents can have a direct impact on student achievement, but it usually is traced, in districts that they can show this, it's through building up the efficacy of principals to do this work. So it seems like you actually have some variation in principal quality in the ability to translate this work. It's not entirely surprising. Most of our districts in the state have variation in principal. It's not as if we actually have universal principalship, all of our principals are able to do this work. It's hard work. And so we think that that's a real big question for the district to wrestle with, and the way we pose it here is what's the quality of supervision that principals are getting? We're not just talking about evaluation, we're talking about coaching, over-the-shoulder support, and we know that your district has been making some investments in that area, and we would encourage you to keep making some of those investments. So lastly, we can't do this work with random acts of, of leadership action. You have to start to build systems within the district so that the work gets done coherently, systemically, strategically over time, and that it can carry past any one individual in the organization. And so we want to share with you a few last findings related to specific systems. So first, human capital. It's clear, and we heard a lot about this, that the district has made some really smart investments in kind of building from the ground up your current human capital systems. Making sure you have the right protocols for screening people, making sure you start to develop better recruiting mechanisms. And it's clear from talking to people in the district, they still have a ways to go, that, that Wyndham is uniquely situated in a lot of characteristics about needing to be very creative in human capital management in terms of recruiting, selecting, screening. If, if eight, or the typical American district, 80 to 85% of our budget's tied up in people, and our number two variables of impact are principals and teachers, well, we better have, we better make sure that our human capital systems work because this is where the biggest payoff can potentially be. And like we're saying, new routine systems and protocols, but as we ask people throughout the system, there's not perfect confidence that the systems in place have actually rendered a high-caliber workforce. And that's coming directly from your labor force saying that. So in terms of your instructional guidance system, this is basically really jargony language that the field uses. It basically means, what are the signals that your teachers use to understand, what am I supposed to teach? When am I supposed to teach it? And how well am I supposed to teach it? So your assessment systems, your curriculum, any common tasks, any of those, you've been doing a lot of work in this. You're starting to really develop a powerful instructional guidance system. You've got curriculum maps up, especially NELA in math, they're providing clarity. Your district will say, we're putting them in place, maybe they're a little too broad, maybe we need to tighten them up, but you're in an early phase of development there. Teachers are feeling a little more confident, they have courses of study, they have essential questions, they have the tools to start to build lessons and units. And this is going to be a cultural change. You have a lot of teachers who, in the system, were saying, yeah, we're starting to develop that, but if you ask me what I use to plan tonight, I'm going to tell you I use the internet and I use my colleague down the hall who I trust. And these aren't necessarily bad things, right? But their first order of business is not, well, I'm looking for the tools that the district has given me. They're saying, I'm going to this Pinterest page that I've created on how to teach this particular content, and I've been collecting these artifacts for five years. And so they would turn to that, for example. We have many of those. So again, teachers still leaning heavily on other sources and trying to figure out how to begin using the new tools that the district's put in place. And again, back to the instructional coaches and the consultants, still some work, some work needed to be done on clarifying roles, responsibility, and relationship to principals there, because these folks are going to become really key parts of your instructional guidance system, because they're going to do the hardest part along with principals. Once you get people to know what they're teaching and when they're teaching, the hardest part is to help people know how to teach it well. And to all kids at rigorous enough, rigorous enough level, and you can't do that just by handing people documents. It requires some retail work where people are face-to-face in each other's practice, modeling the work, giving feedback to the work, and defining those roles, which again, the district's already begun to do, but that's a, seeing that through and making sure there's alignment among all those people is going to be really important. Family community engagement, you have, we were rather impressed when we spoke to folks who had the liaison role. They were able to tell us exactly what their role was, and when we said, well, how does that connect with the priorities of the district? They could articulate clearly how they fit into the broader picture, which is not always the case in other districts, where sometimes the folks who have the role of family engagement are kind of off in a silo, where they're told, well, you get, you get parents to show up at open house night and then we'll work on improvement. They clearly saw themselves as part of the picture, they could articulate the theory of action, they could connect the dots, so we were rather impressed by that, and that that's an important asset for the system to pay attention to. And then a few other headlines. One, I'm sure it is not lost on you that you have a superintendent that seems to have boundless energy. We don't know where it comes from. We just know that she seems to have a lot of energy, and it's not lost on the people in the system. She is a binding force, and I don't want to pin it all on your superintendent, but that, that's an important asset. Access to her is an important, is an important variable. And so those people who have the most access to your superintendent are like in it, they're bound into it, they're connected to the culture. The farther you are away from the superintendent, the less you're feeling it. And so people point to her clearly, but you have some teachers and principals kind of wondering, where does my voice come in and where does my sense of efficacy come into this? Because they know she's such a powerful force. Again, a couple, these are kind of more technical. You're obviously working through a big issue with your compañeros program, and as you've changed the facility location potentially, and as you work through what that means for the staff, that seems to be an important issue, just to kind of settle in and figure out, there are a lot of people kind of nervous about it. What is it going to mean for my people? Is it mean if we go to this other site? And it seems to be an important program existing within your system, serving students, so we just were, we just wanted to mark that. And we had a number of people saying that we haven't quite really developed our technological infrastructure. We're not exactly cutting-edge in terms of the use of technology and how it relates to improvement. So I'm going to pause there. I'm not sure if we landed this in less than 30 minutes, we really tried superintendent.
Great job.
And I know that, that you wanted to create a little bit of time to field questions, and I'll ask Robert to kind of enjoy.
Yeah, I wanted the board to have the opportunity to ask questions. Just for the board to know that this was presented to administrative staff yesterday, all Central Office, all principal, all administrators. In the words of Angela Kiss, that has been here, the language of all the administrators, she finds that this initiative, this assessment, this assessment, this study, in conjunction with the one that we just did from DMC, were the most beneficial she has seen in many, 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 many years in the district. So the next step would be that we went to look at our priorities. What are the priorities that are here? How we align this with our district party? We're not creating new initiative, but how we align our priorities to move to really achieving a greater sense of coherence in the district.
Yeah, if you had to summarize three points that we're really lacking at, that we should concentrate, what would I do?
Let's start with three points that we're really doing good at.
We had all the goods, so I want to know what are we lacking and what should we do?
So we haven't coordinated our answers to this, so you might get three different answers to this, but do you want me to start or do you want to go ahead and start? So I think we know that finding teachers that are effective at serving urban youth is a critical problem in all of America. You have a particular problem in that you're actually situated in an urban area, I mean, a rural area. And so in the sense that there are a number of people coming out of higher ed who actually are really passionate about urban, they'd much rather, no offense, live in New Haven or Hartford or Sanford, because it feels like a larger urban, so that's, that puts you on the wrong side of the equation. Doesn't mean you can't win that battle, but I think finding and retaining top talent in the state ought to be a number one priority in this district. By whatever means necessary, how do you get the best new recruits? Every time an opening comes available, how do you get 20 people vying for that one spot as opposed to being happy that you get one person in this particular kind of science field applying? And then how do you, once you figure out who your top talent is, how do you hold on to those folks six, seven, eight years, not two or three years? And one of the, we did hear kind of loosely that there were, that this is a place where there's a lot of churn, that people are willing to look after a year or two here, they're willing to go four miles down the road and get a $10,000 increase. So I don't think this is a solution, I don't think this is a problem that you can necessarily solve just with money. I think it will take a lot of creative thinking, but I would say that would be thinking worth investing in. That I think, so that human capital work would be first. I would say keep, keep going, that young word, with the work you're doing on creating a really powerful infrastructure for teaching and learning where people know the work. That work will take a few years to really get deeply embedded in any district, it always does. There'll even be resistance to it because people might have been used to doing what they wanted to do without inspection in their classroom for a long time, this typically happens in districts. And as you start to tighten up and say, no, we're actually going to be somewhat on the same page, and we're going to get clear about what we're teaching, and we're going to start to do it well and in unison, it kind of bumps up against people's sense of independence and autonomy, and I think it's a challenge for districts, but I think it's hard to improve at scale if you don't build the infrastructure that you're currently working on. So I think that's an important asset you have, and that's where I would, I really rest. And yeah, those would be my big two. I don't even know if I'd go to the third. To me, those seem to be big two. I guess maybe the third is keep working on a lot of the stuff you're already working and take the exact approach that your superintendent said, which is, we're not adding new projects as a result of this. We're going to tweak, turn, and dial in and tighten up the things we're already working on. Because the worst-case scenario is if the superintendent were to come back and say, hey, okay, we've been working on these things the last three years, but you know, those folks in Lead, Connecticut came in, so now we're throwing out all those priori, priorities, and we're going to pick up these new. It would be the worst thing possible to the system. So trying to figure out how to just add this and use it as feedback to your current improvement systems.
Well, you have two. The third one for me would be the fact that you have a relatively new Central Office team. And it is critical that there is some sustainability at that level. You begin to impact schools when you can actually continue to strengthen that team, and you do have good quality individuals supporting the superintendent. The idea now is to ensure that they continue to remain in the role. Obviously, you normally tweak to one degree or another, but the core is there, and I think if you can keep them over a longer period of time, they will begin to strengthen and produce the results long-term that you're looking for.
Thank you.
Is there a paper copy of this report?
We can get you a paper copy.
Okay, because we haven't, I would have liked to have had the opportunity to look, I know you just got it yesterday as well. I would have liked to have had the opportunity to like read a little more.
No, we don't have that one. I had, I had that old draft, we don't have that one yet.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I have a distinct impression from your presentation, that you're right, we do have a relatively new team. This, I've been on the board, this is longer than I've been on the board, seven and a half years. And seven and a half years ago, this was a district distinctly indeed of turnaround. And so it's taken putting some new players in place to get things to happen. You are confirming our impression that we're, we've got the trajectory going the right way, and we want to, we want to keep going, keep going that way and accelerate if possible. I guess from what I saw there, the things that you mentioned, my, my third would be, we still have some places where leadership at the building level needs to be more stable and stronger. But I've been very impressed the last few years of what happens when you get competent people in place and get them working together. You know, in those cases, we feel like if we only had more money, and we could do better if we had more money, but a lot of the improvement has been improving exactly the kinds of things that you're talking about this evening. So thank you for auditing, and thank you for pointing out some things that we still need to do and confirming that we're, that our sense that we're heading in the right direction is confirmable.
So we thank you for hearing us out. What we did, as we say, is hold up the mirror, and now the work needs to be refined, but you are obviously on a trajectory that continues to deliver for students. So thank you very much and have a great rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to request the board to move the action item, which is number four in our agenda, down past the executive session, number two, which is six, because the superintendent would like to give us some information before we actually vote on the personnel recommendations. So unless there's an objection, I'd like to alter the agenda slightly, and that would give us an opportunity to move to public dialogue if anybody's either filled out the sheet in the front of the room or if there's anyone attending the meeting that would like to make a statement? Yes, no, maybe?
Yes.
Yeah, let's see if, there actually a name on the list? Oh, actually, we have a couple. Mr. Torres?
Yes, Israel Torres. Good evening. Israel Torres, resident, romantic, taxpayer. The reason I'm here, my wife, is to speak about a problem that is going on with the barrel stem lottery. Our son, Israel Torres Jr., got selected to the barrel stems. Two weeks after that, we received a phone call saying that he's not in, that we used our preference twice. We scheduled an appointment with Mrs. Garcia to explain to her how we did not use our preference twice. We had memos policies, we prepared a folder for her to explain to her how we did not use our preference twice. After that meeting, she told us she would call us back within a week and tell us her decision. She never called us back. We called her after 10 days, my wife did, and Mrs. Garcia's words were, it is our mistake, Karen LaPuck made the mistake, I'm dealing with it, and your son's still not in. Very unprofessional. And as you can see, we're very upset about this. She proceeded to say that there's another policy stating that if you have your son en compañero, you have a commitment, and you can't take him out and try to put him in barrel stems. Right now at this moment, a friend of ours, their daughter, Israel Torres, en compañero, applied for the barrel stem lottery, got selected, and she's in. And there's all the three other families that are also in. So none of her policies and memos make sense. We've been going through this for two months, and she always... We've been going through this for two months and she always tries to keep saying more policies and policies. There's another policy that we've looked at because all we've been doing is looking at policies now, policies and memos because of this mess. Another memo policy that we came about, the state of Connecticut, it's not a preference, pre-K's not a preference. I don't know if she can probably change that one too. It's not a preference, the state of Connecticut for pre-K. We paid for that. And another thing, last board meeting, two Wednesdays ago, she stood up in front of all you guys, the parents of Israel Torres Jr., I will call you tomorrow, never did. We waited a week, sent her an email. To this day, she hasn't called. No explanation or nothing. We have prepared a folder for each one of you guys, 33 pages, explaining all the memos how we did not use our policy preference twice. From the texts, emails, we kept paper trail on everything and every board member is going to get a folder.
Excuse me, but we've let you lay this out, a public comment at a workshop meeting should be on the topics of the workshop. You are bringing up a policy issue that we'll have to consider if there's confusion in the policies or the policies are not being followed. But essentially, the details of how the lottery operates and functions is not a board activity. All right? To the extent that the policies are inconsistent with one another or not being implemented, that's something the board can consider. But the superintendent is the person you have to deal with in terms of how the policy's implemented.
Every time we speak to her, the policies change.
I understand that the board has a responsibility to take a look at the policies themselves and we will.
Our superintendent tells parents, we made a mistake and we're not going to fix it, and that's it.
Well, we'll have to look at what the policies actually say.
Very unprofessional.
That's not something that the board is going to deal with tonight or probably ever.
And never, I know, never.
But we will deal with the policy question if in fact...
We tried talking to her, we set up a meeting with her for 45 minutes.
That is not board responsibility. Board's responsibility is are the policies consistent? You're telling us they're not, we'll look at that. Are the policies being carried out the way they're written? Right? We'll look at that.
Whoever explained, she had more details and she was spending all the dates and all the policies and when they came about and everything. Nothing makes sense. Everything that comes out of her mouth, nothing makes sense.
If that is the case, then the board will have to work to fix it.
Okay.
But that's as much as we can do.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. I take it that Ms. Acosta-Corres is same issue?
I would like to pass out, but I can connect my situation, I can connect it with the presentation that they just did because they talk about trust, how you need to trust your superintendent, central office, and everything so everything will work.
Okay. Barbara Popolous?
No, she's going to speak.
I'm going to speak.
Okay, you want to speak to the same issue?
Yeah, I'm going to talk.
I'm sorry, but we've already heard that.
No, I'm going to say something different.
The stuff I missed. I only get three minutes.
She wants to comment on the trust.
All right, all right. I'm sensing from the facial expressions, the rest of the board that will hear that. Go ahead.
Okay. I wasn't aware that we cannot speak on this board meeting because in online it just say board meeting, it doesn't say anything else, that it was going to be a workshop. And on the workshop, they were talking about trust. So I would love to talk about that because how can I trust a person that it doesn't come back when many people saw it on TV? Don't shut me down because I trust trust.
I'm sorry, but the board's policy on comments does not permit ad hominem attacks against anybody for any reason.
But we are talking about trust and can't affect...
I understand.
...be on board.
I understand.
People leave this town.
You've already...
The teachers leave this town.
Wait a minute.
Because there's...
The point you're making is that you feel like you haven't gotten the response from central office that you were entitled to, that you haven't gotten callbacks, so you've told us that.
And you guys made the policy, why cannot talk about the policy? Because it hasn't been resolved with her. He even say, he even throw up the name of a person that I don't even know if it was that person the one that made the mistake or not. What do I need to do? Go to that person?
Is all the information that's down there here?
It's a complete mistake. I would like to explain all those emails because if you see it, you will not maybe understand. Even Luso Sova told me to send all my emails, all the stuff that I have, to her personal email, nor even to the board email. Because to me, this is a board issue right now. Because we have been trying to talk to Dr. Garcia about it and we just received the same answer the whole time.
I understand what that is, right? Unless there's something that's not in here.
Then who is going to help us if she is not helping us? It's only my kid right now because there were two kids that they did the same mistake, but the other one already got in because he was number two on the waiting list. So it's only my kid. What's going to happen with my kid? I'm a taxpayer over here, we have our own house, and we deserve to be listened to.
I'm not saying that you're not going to be listened to, we will look into this.
You are trying to shut me down right now, saying that you guys, you even tried to shut down my husband when you were talking about the policy, that we were not going to talk about the policy because even if you guys made the policy, we need to get with Dr. Garcia.
The policy is the policy. We have to look at the policy as it applies to everybody.
You, I think you guys have all the information. This is not new for you guys. Because she, because if she sent an email to Luso Sova that she told me, that she sent her an email talking about our case, you guys may know about the whole thing going on too. And I want the best for my kid. And when I was talking to her, she just went on to the commitment. She didn't even talk too much about the policy. Because when I speak to her the first time, when I speak to her the first time, she wasn't even sure. I can tell that I have a folder for her with all the emails and she never took it. She said, no, I'm going to just write the date and that's it. Because I have a packet for her. It was Luso Sova who told me to send her all the emails in a text, that they copied that text message.
You've got them all in here?
It's right there.
Okay.
I have papers.
All I can tell you, all I can tell you is that we'll look into it, but we're not going to settle this tonight.
And when can I request like a meeting or something to talk about you guys? More than three minutes, because in three minutes, I will not be able to speak.
When can she expect a resolution? Because I think what she's trying to say is what was understood is you said the board cannot take care of it. And she's trying to fix it with Dr. Garcia and if Dr. Garcia's not handling it, who's going to handle it? I think that's what she's trying to...
Well, we have to actually take a look at this and figure out exactly what we're talking about here. So unless I have a chance to go through this and the rest of the board has a chance to look at it, we can't give you an answer to that question. All I can do is promise you that we will look at it.
And someone will get back to it.
And someone will get back, that's true. We have a phone number here and...
I was going to speak the last board meeting, but she sent me an email last minute about an email that I was supposed to read back in 2015, but I was in maternity leave. And that's what has been asking, that the community, the communication in this district, it's a little bit messed up. The whole thing, it will not come out to you. If, like for example, she sent me a letter and not it was just for me, it was for the whole staff that used already their preference, she sent a letter on May 10. If that letter, it was sent to me before, because sometimes you miss emails. I have been noticing that I don't receive all the emails that everybody sent. If that email was sent by in a letter like to staff because we deserve to have the whole information, I will not have any of this problem.
Okay.
And she made me look like I was doing it on purpose, the last time I talked to her.
I think we have to, like I said, we can't settle this tonight. We have to listen to what you said, we have to look at what you gave us, and we have to talk to superintendent and then we'll have to figure out what to do.
Okay. I would like that and I appreciate it. That's why I bring all the folders so you guys can have the whole information.
And I assume your email address is in these emails? I have your phone number here.
My personal email and my board email.
Okay, all right.
I sent some papers. There was, I was having problems printing it down, that it will not come out the picture that it was in the email, so I sent it to my personal email and then that was able to print out.
We have what we need to get back in touch with you, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would like to say something.
What? Okay.
As a taxpayer, as a former teacher, at York School, 32 years, my father taught here for many years, many, 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 40 maybe. And I'm really not pleased with what's going on here. I can't believe this. And I've always known the boards. I grew up here. My kids chose to go through here. And I never, in my years of teaching, told someone that they were going to get something only to turn around and say, oh, you can't have that. Would you do that to your kids? No.
I'm sorry.
Now, I want to talk about the compañeros thing. Now, the program their son was in, it was before he was five, it was a paid program, and are you telling these parents that they shouldn't put their kids in compañeros? Because maybe they'll get into the STEM school if they don't?
I...
But it sounds like to me...
Okay.
I want to clear that.
Okay, look.
I'm disheartened about honesty, policy, people following through with what they say, making things right. Things are not black and white. So that's what I'm not pleased about.
Okay, thank you.
There are exceptions to every rule and I just want you people to consider it. I'm here on their behalf. And I also had one of the other parents in my class. I took her home for a month. I was a giving teacher, honest. And my father was one of the most honest teachers that ever went through here. That's what bothers me. I want you to make it right.
We have to figure out exactly what the issues are before we can make a decision.
And I'm surprised you don't even know them. And the board isn't always told everything either. Don't kid yourself about that because I know firsthand.
Thank you. Mr. Montoya?
As a board member, I didn't receive any notification about the policy that she said that you have with Ms. Sova.
What was Ms. Sova?
That you were in contact with Ms. Sova with this policy and this problem.
The policy...
I don't know if that happened.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, of course.
The policy of staff preference was approved by this board on December 15 of 2015. The policy of staff preference was approved on December 16 of 2015, every employee was notified of the staff preference.
No, I'm talking about the communication between you and Ms. Sova.
Ms. Sova did not communicate with me other than to say, there is a parent that called her about this situation and to please respond. And May 10 of 2016, the board gave a one-time exception to people that were already enrolled in either compañero and STEM for the 215-216 school year. Your policy of one-time preference was approved December 15, 2015. However, by that time, you had some teachers or staff members that had kids in a program. You chose at that particular time, May 10 of 2016, to give a one-time exemption to the parents that were currently involved. So these are for kids that were already in a program 2015-216. And we'll get that information too, because I did email that information to Mrs. Torres.
I recall the discussion, we may have to go back and look at the minutes, but...
It's in the packet. Do you know that you're sending me the whole information? It's there because I don't need to cover anything.
Okay.
Yep, it's in there.
Dr. Sol, I just have one question.
So you've...
Just a question, great.
Sure.
So does this issue now go to the executive committee? Does it go to the policy committee? How does it get resolved?
Well, let's look and find out exactly what the question is. If it's a question of inconsistent policy, it goes to the policy commission. If it's a question of execution of the policy or lack of execution of the policy, then it goes to the executive committee.
And who makes that determination? Do you vote on that as support, like where it goes?
Well, I'll look at this, but I'm open to suggestion from, if you all want to email me and say what you think when you looked at it. It might end up going, it might end up going to both. There may be both issues of implementation and issues of, it wouldn't be the first time that we had policies that were contradicting one another. I do remember the discussion with Dr. Garcia just...
I remember because we have a teacher, Nicole Bay, that was in that matter, in that situation. And so you approve a policy on December 15 that said staff can only use their preference once. All staff members were notified December 16 of 2015.
Ms. Bay is actually on the worse to speak. Would you like to comment or...
It's not about that, it's about a different topic.
Okay, well, I think, wait, let me make sure the board is finished with this one before.
She wants to talk to this.
Yeah, I mean, say, this, maybe we can set up a committee to study this, this needs some resolution. I think they deserve some...
The policy committee is meeting tomorrow at 5:00.
Okay, then they can review that, okay.
Review it and then get back to them.
The policy committee is meeting tomorrow, 4:30.
That would seem to be a reasonable place to start then. Okay?
Can I ask what the follow-up communication to the Torreses will be because there seems to be a issue about...
Mrs. Torres was emailed, I just finished checking with Janet. Mrs. Torres was emailed, she wrote me a letter. We went back to the notes of that meeting and in that meeting, Mrs. Torres, I asked Mrs. Torres to give me a call. I did receive a letter from Mrs. Torres and I just checked with Janet. We emailed our response to that letter. What did the response to Janet?
It was Margaret.
Margaret, I'm sorry.
It's in the packet.
No, we don't see...
Today, that she didn't seem to have an email for you in the system and that it's in the US mail and a copy will be delivered to your school tomorrow.
That's nice to know that it was today, today after what, after 5:00 something? Because I checked my email at 5:00 a.m., I didn't have anything. This is the lack of communication that I have been talking about. This wasn't just like about the policy. It's you guys made a mistake, that the system is not connected. Because it wasn't just me, it was another person. And she's not over here because she is afraid to talk. That's why she didn't...
Can I say something? There are people that apply for staff preference and if they don't get in, everyone go into the general lottery. Okay? And so people that are on the waiting list and the general lottery, those get in. So we have staff that do not use the staff preference or use it and then go into the general lottery. And so you have a second chance. And there are people on the waiting list and we have been, that two staff members that are on the waiting list in the general lottery was able to get in.
Okay.
Was it listed as your mistake? What part of this?
Well, wait a minute. We're not going to solve this tonight. So we will document what happened and we will, you know, we will produce the documents that essentially talks about who got in and why, who didn't get in and why. So we can get answers, but...
When can the Torreses expect some kind of resolution? A week, two weeks?
We are ready to send our response today. So we will go back and send it. Janet says she sent a regular mail, certified mail, and email. Is that correct?
Well, US, you know.
US mail. So we'll deliver one to a school tomorrow.
She's an employee and you didn't have her an email address?
That, we said it and that's what Janet said. It kicked back.
Okay. Email... Email sometimes does strange and, strange and bizarre things, so.
I just want the Torres's to get a resolution before we have to sit and hear this again in another meeting. Not by any one person's fault, but I don't think this is gonna come through us again.
I, I agree with you.
And had she known that, had she known that using that preference would have kept her kid out of, out of STEM, the STEM school, is, that's ridiculous. She never would have used the other preference.
I don't understand what the email kicked out. If I received an email from Dr. Garcia at four seven, and then that one, it didn't come out?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think the board's gonna be able to figure out the sequence of activities, particularly if there are missing documents or whatnot, tonight. So, we'll, we'll try and trace this and explain what happened to everybody. At, at least what did or did not happen, so that we're all on the same page. Any questions to show you?
I'll tell you what happened. She sent that letter today, she knows I was coming over here. The same thing that she did the last meeting, that she sent that email, because it was the time that I was coming. Because I have people that told me that she was expecting me to come. And she want more people to come, so she can confront me with the people that made the mistake. And that's, 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 she should not have told me.
I think, I think we're gonna have to look at, okay.
The person who did it. Because what I'm gonna do, that's like, what she want me to, to do? Those who work her, that I don't even know her, and complain about, "Why you did the mistake? What's gonna happen?" No, she, she even say, they, they explained me the lottery even a different way. That they vote the lottery, and then the, the ones that staff preference go up. She explained it the wrong way. She did it, she just explained that they do the preference first and then the lottery. She, she just, she doesn't even know the whole information about everything, how does, does everything work?
I believe, yeah, I believe, I believe in fact that she does know. The question is, we have to, we will have to look at this to find, figure out what happened. All right? And I'm not prepared to, to listen to accusations about someone else's motives. I mean, that's, now you're getting in a, now you're getting in an area where we just can't, you know? The inference about someone else did something.
She's as a person. That's what it is. It defines how she, how she is as a person. She.
Wait a minute. Now, 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 wait a minute. As I, I did say before, right? Ad hominem attacks are just not something that we're prepared to deal with.
Okay, listen, we would like to thank.
So, you can't attack another person. We're not gonna attack you. We'll listen to you, we understand that there's a problem, we'll look into the problem. It's most I can do.
Well, we would like to thank you for putting up with our, us, our concern for a five-year-old who's done nothing to deserve this. They were told he was in, it should be kept that way. So, thank you again. We're not gonna bother you anymore tonight.
All right.
I would just like to say, as a matter of procedure, about three or four meetings ago, we had another issue with a parent come before us. And Miss Suba shut them down and said that if we received any communication from people in the future, we were to send it directly to Dr. Garcia. I'm concerned that she used her personal email address and not her board email address. And according to Dr. Garcia, did not communicate it to Dr. Garcia.
She did, no, no, she did not communicate document to me. So, she did communicate, I should receive a phone call.
Can I finish? And as a point of, of going forward, that none of us should provide personal email addresses. That opens them up to FOI, that opens them up to legal interrogation, and we should continue to protect our personal lives, as well as the board, by not doing that going forward. I think that was erroneous on her part.
Thank you.
That's not incorrect, so, okay.
Sorry?
So, you're not incorrect.
No, I thought you said I was incorrect.
No, you are. You're quite, you're quite right. Anything that has to do with board business should be conducted using the board email account.
I agree.
And, and issues that are not directly related to policy issues should be sent to superintendent.
I just wanted to caution the rest of us against that in the future.
All right. Shall we give Ms. Bay?
Nicole's waiting.
Yes, yes. It's waiting for her opportunity.
Is it my turn now?
Sorry, Ms. Bay, that you had to.
That's okay. Um, I'm here tonight to discuss, or to bring forth my feelings about what's been going on with the Campaneros program and the possible movement of the program to another building. I appreciated the meeting that we had at North Wyndham School for parents to come forward and express our concerns, and to be told about what was going on with the process. At that meeting, we were allowed to sit and discuss our concerns and our questions at a table, and then we had a representative who was able to stand up for each table and bring those, um, concerns forward. And, you know, we understood that not all of those things could be answered that evening, because we're at a certain phase in the process of this. A concern that was brought to me after our last board of ed meeting was that a comment was made about the program being moved to Wyndham Middle School, which was brought to us as one possible solution. Um, so, myself and other parents from the program, because my daughter is in Campaneros, are wondering what are some of the other, um, options that are being explored? I don't expect an answer tonight, but just at our next community meeting, to have some possible other options.
Uh, Mr. Plaiden?
Thank you. And, uh, school planning design committee, Campaneros is on the agenda.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, I thought.
So, the same night that I'm supposed to be at North Wyndham School for the bullying conversation?
They're not that many days in the month.
Five thirty, five thirty.
That won't be, that won't be the last time the plan.
No, 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 no. No, it's, it's, it's still in study, it's still.
But do you be planning to bring it back out to the community and to the families again before decisions are made?
If that's appropriate, absolutely. The, the committee process, the subcommittee process is open dialogue. It's about planning. It's about getting as much information as we can. And during this question, we've increased the tempo to twice every other week, twice a month, because, because it's an important question. And so, we're working on it aggressively.
So, it sounds like that's a more important committee meeting for me to be at tomorrow night. I hope I get a.
Please, please come. You certainly will.
I'll be there, if you wanna call me and get it updated.
And Nicole, they are having a second section of the bowling. They're repeating the same workshop next month.
Okay.
Okay, so, the second week of next month, they're repeating the same workshop.
Okay, great. Um, one of the things that I wanted to bring forward was that, at that meeting, it was made very clear that there were two big goals of the program. One was to expand the program, because it's been so successful, and it's so good for our students in our community. Um, and the other's for the program to eventually gain autonomy, which I think is fabulous as well. Um, I feel as though moving to a school within a school is a lateral move and not forward progress. Um, and that's not just me that's.
So, I'm sorry, I really don't need to cut you off, but this, the content of these comments, please bring them to committee, please, because that's where the dialogue can occur.
Okay.
This really shouldn't be dialogue.
And I just wanted to express my concerns. I didn't.
Oh, please, 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 bring your notepad and lots of paper.
And the final thing that I wanted to bring up on this was, um, a discussion was had about a K-8 school, and how parents at that meeting were expressing concern, and it was, well, you know, they're all our students, and they are absolutely all our students. I didn't think that was fair to attack our middle school students versus our Barrows students. But I do think that we need to recognize that it is a very different situation. The number of middle school students in our K-8 school is very different than the number of middle school students that we have at Wyndham Middle School. Also, the way that that middle school was built at Barrows, it was a slow rollout, where we started with K-1, 2, 5, 6. So, the fifth and sixth grade students grew into our seventh graders and our eighth graders, and we didn't bring in a whole bunch of K-4 students or K-5 students into, you know, kind of their environment. So, I think that there are just some things that, you know, we need to consider as community members, as a board, as people who are looking for the best interests of our students. And I thank you for that information.
Oh, please, I, I think you'll begin to get a, a better feel with blueprints and conversation with architects and the committee members about, about some of these questions.
There's also the issue of rollout, which is.
Yeah, of course, certainly.
But as long as the camera's rolling, and as long as, I'd like people that are watching this as well to understand that our subcommittee meetings are open, uh, that we permit people to discuss and, and participate in the discussion at the subcommittee meetings. So, that's a great place to, to get information and also, uh, express, uh, concerns and, and even offer your own recommendations about what you'd like to see happen.
You literally, and community members literally can become parts, part of the process.
So, that's tomorrow at 5:30.
5:30.
The Kramer.
Kramer, Kramer, second floor.
Thank you very much.
Certainly, you're welcome.